This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, could we go through the the rules of the meeting and then do a roll call?
Yes, yes, we can. Rules for remote participation and etiquette during planning commission meetings. Just wrapped up the agenda review, which occurs between seven and 7:30. We're about to start the, or we are starting the public meeting at 7:30. Public comment will be taken for each project on the agenda and at courtesy of the floor. Chat box features will be active only during the public comment portion of the meeting. If you desire to make a comment during the public comment portion of the project review, please type your full name and address in the chat box. There's a bubble icon in the upper right. Your name will be read and you will have three minutes to make your comments. Time will be allotted for comments from those who are accessing the meeting by phone only. Speakers will again be limited to three minutes. All speakers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Just a note on that is sometimes I find that the callers may not be able to mute, so I may mute callers if we're getting some feedback. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, and when we get there, Brian, would you be able to do the timing?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks. Okay, and then David, a roll call. For Greg.
Brian Height.
Present.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Bill McNair.
Here.
Matt Mulqueen.
Here.
Alan Tope. Alan is not present. David Wilson.
Here.
Five members present, sufficient for a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Greg. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The one other thing, just when we can notice that there is still an opening for the planning commission, anyone that wants to, we are revising the the rules, the process for getting members, so there's still time to apply, anyone that's interested can apply with Tracy. And okay, that's all there. The next agenda item is the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments to the minutes? These are the minutes from the February 23, 2021 meeting.
I do, Chairman.
Okay.
Under Agenda Item 4 of the, the public listed there, I think Brad Osborne's name is misspelled. I don't think he has a U in his name.
No U.
And on the next page was the middle, it says Mr. Height noted, and then there's like a T H A, I think that's supposed to be that, the streetscape plan.
Okay.
Six paragraphs from the bottom.
Yeah.
And then on the next page, page five of our packet, also about that far from the bottom, it said, Mr. Height inquired as to whether there's an elevation in the existing dispensary that should be elevator. And that's it for me.
Good. Thank you, Brian. Are there any other comments to the minutes? You're now, I hear a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Okay, moved by Brian, second by Diane. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Epstein. I wasn't present.
And David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
Okay. All right, so that takes care of agenda items one and two, and now Agenda Item 3 is the Comprehensive Plan Update Summary.
So I'm having, hang on one second. There it goes. So we had the Phase 4 kickoff meeting on March 31st. It was an informational meeting where we were presenting the kind of where we were in this next phase of the Comprehensive Plan Update, where we're in the form working groups based on the specific topic areas spelled out by the MPC. Those topic areas include transportation, resource protection, housing, community utilities, and community facilities. One thing that we've been working on is getting the presentations and all the information that, from the meeting up on our website. Kind of the next piece is getting the videos uploaded, well, they got uploaded and getting the links embedded in here. And then we're also going to be updating some information on the working groups, what's involved and what the topics are, topics include, and once we kind of get all that ironed out and then finalized, we will be sending out another email blast and website and news articles and school board to try and get as many people as we can involved in this working group phase. The working group phase will be, there'll be two, beginning, a start meeting for everybody, and then, then three individual breakout meetings for each of the works, work groups, and then a concluding meeting. So it's five meetings total for the working groups, just to give it people an idea of what, what they're signing up for. And that's kind of where, where, where we are now. I'll have some more updates and some more information and some ideas on Phase 5 that I'd like to share with the board and run by the board. So stay tuned and hang out. If not, check out the website and try and get as many people as we can into these working groups. This is really where the recommendations happen and get moved forward. So thank you for everybody's interest and we'll talk again later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. And for everybody on the call, I think this is the, one of the most important things we do in the township is the, is the plan, and if you have any time at all, can devote to this, I think is the most important thing you can do to get information on what we are doing, what's the township is doing, and have some influence on it. I think this is the best opportunity. That's how I got involved in this on the last Comprehensive Plan about 10 years ago. And for the Planning Commission, we'd like to get two people on each of these work groups. So if you haven't already, if you could send in, you know, what, what your three favorite ones are, so that we can figure out if we, if we do have that with the natural things that people, everybody's selecting, and we'll go over that again.
Yeah, Dave, I'll shoot you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I think there is a, this is a sign up form.
Yeah, so there's a sign up form that goes through the blog. One of the things that we're kind of wrestling with is the new website offers a lot more functionality than the old website. And when we started this process, everything was through the blog because the functionality was better than the old website. Now it's kind of vice versa. So we're trying to manage that and just making sure the links are cross links and, you know, it's all there one way or the other.
Okay. All right, thank you. So there will be more on the Comprehensive Plan later on this meeting after we go through the two subdivision reviews, which we have now. The first one is Nestle Purina wastewater treatment upgrades, and the second one is the Robert Rue subdivision. Each of these will be, so the Nestle Purina wastewater treatment upgrades is major plan 2021-102. And we will have, it's a request for preliminary final plan review, a staff presentation, an applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and a planning commission decision. So Greg, if you could start out with the presentation.
Sure. This is an application to further develop the property located at 2050 Pope Road. The plan proposes the construction of a 21,921 square foot wastewater treatment building on the current site of Waste Disposal Facility Holding Basin 1B, as well as ancillary tanks and piping on approximately four acres of the 114.6 acre tract. The subject tract is Zoned IC1 Industrial Commercial 1, special height limitation. Nestle Purina Pet Care Company is the owner and applicant. Let's just say that previous consideration to this site with the township is extensive. And then skip to the recommendation of the Community Development Department. The department recommends that the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary, subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township be executed, that sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted, such security shall be available for draws, presentations, no further than 60 miles from the township's office, and evidence of necessary insurance coverage be provided to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction of township engineer, the comments of Mr. Anthony Talerita, as contained in his review dated April 9th, 2021. Three, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction of township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor, as contained in his review dated April 1st, 2021. Four, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction of Community Development Department, the comments of Mr. Greg Adams, as contained in his review dated April 9th, 2021. Five, that the applicant obtains a review from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Six, that the applicant obtains a letter from the Lehigh Valley, Lehigh County Conservation District approving the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan pursuant to Section 31239E of SALDO, or that the applicant obtains a letter from the PADEP and/or LCCD approving the NPDES permit application pursuant to 31239E of SALDO as appropriate. Seven, that the applicant complies with the April 5th, 2021 recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Board. Eight, that the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of the Landscape and Chatri Commission. Nine, if deemed to be necessary, that a declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. Ten, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And 11, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission has a soft deadline to act of May 17th, 2021. The Board of Commissioners hard let, hard deadline to act on the plan is June 16th, 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Turn it over to the applicant, and then we will have questions from the planning commission and then courtesy of the floor. So turn it over to applicant.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ahmed McCurgi. I work at base engineering. Base engineering was retained by Nestle Purina to compile this application and submit it to South Whitehall Township for review also by the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, and then to the Lehigh County Conservation District for NPDES permit approval. Part of the applicant's team also includes Brian Blank, he's the plant manager, and Mike Nahara-Leclaire, he's a project engineer, senior project engineer, in case there are questions that you might have tonight. We obviously have received the summary package, so marvelously put together by Greg Adams. It includes the various comment letters that have been prepared by South Whitehall Township, their staff and their consultants. We really do not have any issues with the comments presented in any of these comment letters, and these would be, will comply items. I also wanted to provide you with another basic summary in that this wastewater treatment upgrade, upgrade will not increase traffic to or from the property, will not increase the number of employees or vehicular traffic, will not increase water consumption or sewage disposal, and will not increase impervious area coverage. In fact, we are realizing a decrease in the impervious area coverage within the area of work or limit of disturbance by 16 square foot. So in all of this, I believe this is a, an improvement to the facility, which is why the wastewater treatment upgrade is being proposed. And one of the other factors that we wanted to highlight here also was the fact that this upgrade will go a long way in order control, which you may have received complaints from neighbors in the past. So all in all, oh, in addition to that, there are a few subdivision land development ordinance waivers and deferrals that the applicant is requesting as part of this subdivision package. These are more or less, I'm going to say, routine waivers or deferrals that the township has granted in the past with the several recent land development projects that has been proposed. So I'm here basically requesting, or hopefully that you would be kind enough to recommend conditional preliminary final plan approval and also granting of the waivers. And if there are any questions, we would be very, I would be very happy to answer them if I can. If not, I think the two representatives from Nestle Purina may be able to step in and answer those questions that I am unable to answer if they pertain specific to the process.
Okay, thank you. If I can ask one question, could you give a little bit of what, what is the process that's being put in and what does it replace?
Yeah, let me see. Mike, are you here?
Yeah, Amit, would you like me to answer that one?
Yes, would you please?
Sure, this is Mike Nahara-Leclaire. So, and I'm an environmental engineer with the Corporate Engineering Group. The current wastewater process at Allentown consists of, there's a primary system up the hill that we're, that's not in the focus here. What we're talking about is the secondary wastewater treatment system. And in essence, it's a, it's a activated sludge aerated basin. You can't see it because it's, it's, but it's a triangular shaped unit. And from that point, it is, is clarified. We also have a cooling water process at the factory that goes in lagoon two, which is the longer, a larger rectangular piece. Basically, that's just, consider that non-contact cooling water. So the effluent from the current system gets mixed with the effluent from the cooling system and is discharged. The, the new proposed upgrade, which will be constructed entirely in the footprint of, of our lagoon 1B, so we'll operate both systems until we can make that turnover. But the new system will allow us to meet the lowered nutrient removal requirements of our DRBC and paid at permits. When we relocated our, our primary plant in 2015, new limitations for phosphorus and nitride, nitrogen were introduced, and this treatment plant will be necessary to achieve those levels. It, it will consist of a multi-chamber biological nutrient system, so there, there's four main reactors. So it'll be anoxic anaerobic, then a bioreactor, and finally a anoxic polished lagoon at the very end.
Okay, and you said you'd be operating both of them at the same time?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll be constructing, I misspoke. We'll be constructing the upgrade at the time, at the time the existing system is, is working. Once constructed, there'll be about a month or month and a half of changeover between the new systems and the old. And once we do that switch over, the existing bioreactor, the triangular piece, that will be refashioned into a lagoon that basically is, is part of our, our, our emergency collection system if there's a power outage.
Are you going to need to close the lagoon underneath?
Lagoon 1B?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that'll, that will be closed. We've presently retained Earthrise Group to characterize those solids and get that plan approved by Paid Up.
Uh huh. Is there groundwater monitoring also?
As part of the current project? Not that I'm aware of previously.
And is there any part of this project?
No, there is not.
Okay.
Not proposed.
All right, any questions from the other members of the Planning Commission?
I have several questions and partial statement on the deferral and waiver requests. Is your justification for all the waivers and deferrals is that it was granted in 2016?
Yes, and, and this, this project frankly is of a much smaller scale. And those would be waivers, that would be minimal waivers, and obviously because also that they were granted previously.
Okay, just so you're aware, there are only three members of the Planning Commission that were on the board at that time. There's only one Board of Commissioner, Commissioner that's currently on the board at that, at this time. And the MPC 512.1 of the MPC says the burden's on you to give us a list of the waivers, and I, I will read to you. Section B of 512.1, "All requests for modifications, which is a waiver or deferral, shall be in writing and shall accompany and be a part of the application for development. Their request shall state in full the grounds and facts of the unreasonableness or hardship on which the request is based, the provision or provisions of this ordinance involved, and the minimum modification necessary." So I think you before, regardless of our recommendation at this board, when you go to the Board of Commissioners, I think your request letter needs to be augmented and have a specific justification because just saying that it was approved in 2016 is not justification enough in my part. So that's, that's, you know, and I think we need to go through each one of these waivers and discuss them from the top of your letter down because we have nothing to go off of other than a recommendation by this board in 2016. And where I've stated before, there's only three members that have that historical knowledge, and even I don't remember. And I've been on this board 11 years, so we have a lot of projects go through, so if you want to attack it or go over to waivers on your letter, that I think now would be an appropriate time unless another member of the commission has the further questions.
We can, I can certainly do that. Maybe we can do that after you've asked all your other questions, and we can get back to the waiver list then.
Okay, I think we can do it that way. Are there other questions from the?
Yeah. I do have a question. One of the waivers is in regards to getting the building permit. I was just curious. So it seems like it'd be, it's a challenging endeavor for the subgrade and the foundations for that building. I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of mucky soils where that building is going to be placed on. I was just interested in the, the geotechnical aspects and how the foundations are going to be proposed for that building.
I believe the applicant's design engineer will be addressing that. Mike, am I correct?
Yes, from, from my understanding, there has been a geotechnical report done at this point, and with respect to the characterization of the solids from, from that 1B, it will also include the, the removal of, of materials and the first three feet of, of clay material from that lagoon to establish an adequate base to move forward.
Has the appropriate township departments, you know, reviewed any of that building design and whatnot yet? Or just for building permits and, you know, everything?
I don't believe they've been submitted yet.
Okay.
So what's the plan for that?
Oh, well, obviously, a building permit or building plans along with a building permit application will be formally submitted to the township for review, to be reviewed by the appropriate officials and/or consultants.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? I do have one more question on the, just, has there been any site-wide groundwater monitoring? What's, what's in the wastewater and that's treated here?
So Amit, I'll, I'll answer this.
Yes, please, Mike.
Yeah, sure. You know, as everyone knows, this is a, a pet food manufacturing facility, so predominantly the wastewater generated from the process standpoint is high in meat content, high in starches and carbohydrates. So from a wastewater lingo, it's, it's a BOD, COD suspended solids. There's, there's ammonia and phosphorus and other micronutrients. So in our, our primary plant that, that removes a lot of the floating solids and, and oil and grease when it comes down to secondary, that's where the processed water commingles with domestic wastewater from the, from the facility and is treated biologically.
Uh huh. And you said it's combined with the cooling water. Are there any, do you treat the cooling water?
The cooling water does have your typical water treatment chemicals. So there's a corrosion inhibitor, an alkaline, alkalinity enhancer. And that the new system, I was going to say that the new system, we will further treat that to address the phosphorus that is present in that wastewater stream with a chemical, physical precipitation and filtration.
Okay, that, so is that, you were talking about four basins, is that in addition to the four basins you were? the four basins you were, you, you mentioned earlier?
So, so the four basins i- is part of the, the structure that you're seeing, uh, down below. That's an integrated structure. The longest section on the east side is primarily, um, a series of, of precast, pre-stressed concrete tanks from Dutchland. And, and the various tankages are, are, um, laid out there. And then the building is, is connected to those, those tanks.
Hmm. Okay, what, what is the flow rate? Of the wastewater treatment system?
The, the design of, of the process wastewater end is going to be point five three MGD.
Okay, that's the process. Good.
And on the cooling water side, uh, it's, it's point six. I want to say six, three, six, five, somewhere in there.
Okay, so it's right around a million gallons a day?
Correct.
Or one point one, somewhere in there, one point two. Okay. And, and this gets discharged to the, uh, to, to the Jordan where?
It's, it's an unnamed tributary that, that discharges to the Jordan Creek.
Okay. And, and where does that join the Jordan Creek?
The, the unnamed tributary?
Right.
Yeah, I, I do not know the, uh, the answer to that question. I could get it for you.
Okay. I'd just be interested in that. All right. Uh, and, and earlier you said that there, there has not been groundwater monitoring at the site?
Not with respect to this project.
Has there been groundwater monitoring other than this project?
In the past, I presume so. I, I, I don't have the history of that to answer you.
Okay. All right.
I, I do want to note that the existing, um, networks or, or, um, working lagoons are, uh, clay-lined earth and lagoons. Uh, in, in a new system going forward are, you know, it, it'll be a concrete, uh, tank system that's imperious.
Hmm, okay. All right. Any more questions from the team commission? Okay, well, are there any questions from public?
If you have questions, please enter them in the chat now.
Is the chat?
I'm getting there.
I'm sorry. If you have questions, enter them in the chat soon.
I think. Somebody wanted to test it. Okay, got it. Oh, so we do, um, Connie Rabald, forty-six, forty-four Huckleberry Road. The floor is yours. Connie?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, um, I'm trying to understand where exactly this is going to be located. Um, I see Pope Road. Where is this in relationship to Huckleberry Road?
Can we pull it up on Google Earth maybe?
Yeah, if you don't mind, give me one second. You're seeing the aerial of the overall. Huckleberry Road is to the north. The turnpikes to the west. And the building is this gray, gray rectangular shaped building. Right around Pope Road and the turnpike.
Okay, Pope Road and the turnpike, so, okay. So Huckleberry Road is above, you said?
Uh, that's correct. It's, um, to the north of their site. If you can follow my cursor right on the top of the picture, if you will.
Okay.
Way we could pull it up on Google Earth, then it might be a little easier.
I'm zooming in right now. I apologize. It's coming.
And I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry.
That's fine. So. So Turnpike runs north, south. Huckleberry Road is along this top edge right here, if you will. Um, the building is going right over top of this, uh, green lagoon right through here.
Okay, and you can see the tri- is that the triangle that was being described earlier?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Not seeing any in the chat. Um, would any callers like to speak? I, they appear to be unmuted, so I'm guessing the silence means they don't want to speak.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then. I would say, um, maybe we go through the the, um, waiver deferrals. And then
Sure.
And we do the, the, the whole, the whole, the thing at the, at the end. So let's start with the first one. Waiver requested for requirements of contours on adjacent land. Sidewalks, location of sidewalks, trails, driveways, et cetera, within four hundred feet. And there's not an engineering objection. Does, any, any questions on this waiver from anyone on the planning commission? Does someone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. That's Matt and David. Are there any, any further questions, comments on this?
It's just showing the contours on the plans outside of the project areas.
Right. Any questions or comments on this, on this waiver?
Roll call?
Okay, roll, roll call vote.
All right, um, Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. On the, the second one is a, a waiver requested for the installation of concrete curb along internal streets. I would prefer to change these, some of these waivers, including this one, to deferrals. I don't know what other people think.
I agree.
I agree.
And, and, and I am one of the planning commission members that wasn't on the board, um, in two thousand sixteen, so, um. I, I don't know what the history is of the justification for the wave, um, deferral requests, so if, um, if some justification could be provided, would be appreciated.
Okay, that's a good question.
Yeah, but so this is Amit from Base Engineering. Uh, generally speaking, uh, the internal driveways or parking areas that are within the property are essentially, uh, only for employees and visitors. Uh, there is really no open access into the property unless somebody has any business with any of the, uh, project, uh, or any of the, uh, uh, plant, uh, people, uh, if there is any meetings or anything of that sort. Uh, it has been operating in this fashion for all these years, uh, without any need for any, uh, curbing for the internal roadways or driveways, et cetera. Uh, and that access is limited to, uh, permission because there is a, uh, guard shack right at the entrance from Pope Road. Uh, people, uh, you know, if, only if you have some business with the plant personnel, uh, would anybody be allowed to come into the property. That being said, uh, what has been, uh, at this facility for all these years has been working perfectly. Uh, and, uh, it has been determined by the planning commission and the commissioners in the past that uh, there was no need to augment, um, uh, any of the internal driveways with, uh, curbing or sidewalk. Uh, and, uh, we're requesting the same waiver. Besides what is being proposed at this time, uh, is only going to be accessed by plant personnel only for maintenance purposes. Um, so this project, uh, does not rise to the category of, uh, triggering the need for uh, curbing or sidewalk, uh, at this point.
Well, I, I thought that you're, you're doing work, so it kind of does. I thought. Is that? But, uh, let me ask, is there a speed limit in the plant?
Uh, I believe it is like, uh, ten miles per hour or something like that. There is a speed limit which the, the, the people at the guard shack uh, will, uh, inform you when you enter the plant.
Okay.
If, if I may? I have a question.
Yes.
Amit, would, would curbing impact the stormwater management on the site?
I was going to get to that. Uh, yes, uh, the, uh, let me just take a minute to explain this, the stormwater management. The stormwater management, uh, program for this site, uh, is something that has been scrutinized, uh, intensely uh, by all the reviewing agencies, including the township engineer and Leah Valley Planning Commission and Conservation District for over, I'm going to say twenty years or so. And one of the, uh, important considerations of the stormwater management is, uh, unimpeded flow as, as much as possible to the discharge points. So, so there are three discharge points. Uh, and they are characterized by what is called as watersheds. So for example, what, uh, the wastewater treatment upgrade building is going to be located within what is called as watershed B. Uh, and the, uh, discharge of the stormwater runoff, uh, from this site uh, essentially then, uh, converges to a culvert that, uh, ultimately uh, goes under the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Uh, that is governed by, uh, NPD's permit, which is currently active, uh, which will obviously be upgraded at this point in time. So for the reasons stated before, as well as, uh, uh, for facilitating appropriate or proper stormwater management, uh, flow, uh, in a proper fashion. It is, in my, in my, as, uh, my humble opinion, not desirable uh, to have, uh, internal curbing.
Okay. Any, any other questions? And I guess I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, and when you do that, I think it's still just prefer to change the word waiver to deferral. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
With the deferral requested?
Yes.
Second. Second.
And who's, who's second?
Brian.
Brian, okay. So that's a motion by Diane, second by Brian. A roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Uh, the third one is, uh, uh, and, uh, there's a, it's Saldo three twelve thirty-five. I'm not going to repeat all. De- deferral requested for the installation of concrete curb along public streets. Again, it's a deferral. A- any?
Approved.
Okay. Do you hear a second? I'll second it. So that was, that was Matt, wasn't it? Yes. Okay. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Then the, uh, next one is, uh, change it to deferral, uh, requested for the installation of concrete curb along the internal driveways and all street parking areas.
I'll make a motion to approve. Deferral.
Okay. Your second?
Second.
Diane, okay, Matt and Diane. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Letter E, uh, also change waiver to the deferral for requested for installation of concrete sidewalks along access drives.
Motion.
Okay, that's Matt. Let's go here a second.
Second.
Diane's second. A roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and that one was for, uh, uh, okay, that was for the access drives, right?
Yes.
Okay, number, letter F is, uh, a deferral requested for installation of concrete sidewalks along public streets and along perimeter of the property. We hear a motion?
Removed.
Motion by Diane?
A second.
Second by David? Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Uh, letter G, a deferral requested pertaining to right-of-way dedication along perimeter roadways. Motion to approve? I'll make a motion. It's Matt, a second.
Second.
That's Brian. Um, okay, roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero. Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, H is deferral requested pertaining to the planting of street trade shade trees along the perimeter roadways. Okay, motion by Diane.
A second.
Okay, Matt's second, a roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and the last one, I will read it. I, I may want to understand this a little bit. It's a waiver requested pertaining to the issuance of building permits prior to completion. Of the subdivision plan recording. We know the section should be revised to. Three twelve thirteen F three. What, what does it mean? What does that mean pertaining to?
I'm gonna try and attempt to answer this question, and I'm sure Greg may want to step in and corroborate what I'm saying. So what happens is we go through the protracted review of the site plan, land development plan process. And then, once the engineering approval is obtained. There seems to be a significant gap. Or a time period between the time that happens and between the time all the various agreements. Are put in place relative to the developer's agreement. So when the project essentially then transitions from a, a technical review to the administrative part of it. So all that we are requesting is to be able to issue the building permits. So that the project can fast track and not get bogged down. Because when lawyers get involved, it takes a lot of back and forth and. We've experienced this. This has actually come about as a, as a result of the time it has taken. For the agreements to be put into place because until and unless the agreements are put in place. The M P C does not allow the plan to be recorded. That was the, that was the narrow purpose of that waiver request. Greg, you can step in.
I, I have a couple of questions regarding that. In terms of the. You know, developers agreement that gets put together after a plan approval. Usually there's a cost estimate that's put together. And escrow that that's put aside and that's to protect. The township if the improvements don't get made, then the township can pull those funds to. You know, construct whatever's needed. So I, I, I think it's important to have those agreements in place to protect the township. Now, I don't know if. This project really has any public improvements. It seems like it's all private. I, I would. You know, defer to what Greg and Anthony. Would say in terms of that, but.
Yeah, David, I think, I apologize, Greg, you can go.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna address that. Normally, this isn't just a broad waiver of that section. The township does require that appropriate security and insurance. And at least through a pre, pre-security construction agreement be put in place before any permits can be issued. This is mainly. If we get to a point where some of the legal issues are holding up, and I do know with Nestle Purina, they are dealing with corporate in St. Louis. With their own legal team, and that can draw out the process for these things. So the township does ensure that they are properly protected through that process. Prior to plan recording. So anything here Jennifer would review that actually require. Before we can go ahead with issuing building permits. So the township will be protected. Before, if you allow this.
That said, though, I don't, I don't think that there's anything to secure here. So you might have noticed in, in Greg's reading of the. Community Development Department recommendation that he said it deemed to be necessary, we do the agreements, but. But frankly, I don't see that any agreements being necessary in this case. So in that case. This request, this particular request in this particular instance might not be. Might not have any negative consequences is what I'm trying to say.
So you're okay with it?
I am.
Is it, is it necessary?
If they want their building permit before it's. I think so. I have a question. Was this granted in two thousand sixteen?
It actually came about because of the, the last one where. Exactly as Greg pointed out, there was an interim. Agreement along with the security and insurance that was put in place. Till the main developers agreements, etc., were consummated. So this is going to be similar to the last project.
But according to your letter, it was granted before. In two thousand sixteen.
Well, all I'm saying is that. What, what happens is that it is going to be protected because there are going to be appropriate securities, etc., that will be put into place. With what Greg talked about was that the interim. What, what did, what did you call that, Greg? Pre-construction or something like that? Free, yeah, something like that. So all those, all those precautions will be in place and the applicant has no issues with. The application of the same procedure to this.
Hi, this is Laura. If I can, I'd like to just clarify with the building permit process. The way that works is they can run concurrently with the review while land development process is happening. And if the building permits would be approved by the third-party inspection agency. They would not be able to be released until the plan is recorded. That is customary and the policy that we take. With that being said. If the plans are approved by the third-party agency and they do have to sit with the township. Until the recording happens, they are only good for a hundred and eighty days. So if the recording does not happen within the timeframe that the plan is approved. By that one hundred and eighty days, the permit would be void and you would have to redo the process through the third party again. Just want to make that clear so everyone understands that.
Laura, is that a scenario that, that has. It's darkly been an issue with the township?
It's not an issue. That's a policy. That's what we do. The Uniform Construction Code does not allow us to issue because them being a state agency. And that safeguards the township all the way around as well. So while we understand the applicant's desire to. Have things, you know, processed quickly between each step, we do allow the review process. However. It, it, we hold it until the recording is done because basically we don't have an approved plan. So we can't issue a building permit for something that doesn't exist yet in the township, basically in sense. So just want to let the applicant know that yes, they can if they want to. Take that chance of getting the permit approved through third party. They certainly can do that. Just so they understand that if their plan is not recorded within a hundred and eighty days under the Uniform Construction Code. It will become void. And they will need to go through the process again. Not saying it's going to take time. I mean, the third-party process. They have thirty business days to review a commercial project. So worst-case scenario. If they get it approved through the third-party agency and it does expire. They resubmit exactly if there's no change and within thirty business days or less, they have their building permit approval.
And to speak to the historical of this. I don't know, I don't personally know of any permit that has been voided through expiration. But I think there might have been a few that got close. And with regard to the Nestle Purina, there's something sticking in my head that says the two thousand sixteen go-around. The, the applicant went to the Board of Commissioners to amend. To, to add that waiver to the resolution. Something just tells me that's what they did when they had concerns about not being able to draw, you know. Building permits before the plan was being, to be recorded. So I, I seem to recall something of, of a historical nature, this happening before, just not, not immediately at planning commission, but. After passed through.
This, this is Amit speaking. Yes, Greg is correct. And there was one other thing I wanted to add, you know, just as Laura mentioned, the U C C. I believe the M P C is also very clear as to no construction can occur. Without the plan being recorded. Am I correct on that, Greg?
Yes, that is correct.
So, so one, one, one way or the other, there is ample protection all the, all the way around in place. There, whereby the granting of this waiver would not have any adverse effect. On the township's standing or have any adverse effect on the protection of the township.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so, so Jennifer, you're okay with this. Does somebody want to make a?
So moved. Motion to approve.
I think Brian got that one.
Brian, and then David, you second? Okay, roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. And so that takes care of all the. Waivers and deferrals. We need, we need a. A general approval.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Brian and David?
I second.
Oh, oh, Matt. Okay, Brian and Matt. Roll call.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. That, there anything else on this? I think that takes. Care of that.
Thank you very much on behalf of Nestle Purina. You all have a wonderful evening. I'm gonna sign off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Moving on to Robert Rue subdivision. This, this will be done the same way, staff presentation, applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor. And decision. So Greg, if you want to do the.
Yes, this is an application to subdivide the property located at two four four two Huckleberry Road. The plan proposes to subdivide the four point five nine six acre parcel into. Lot one containing one point two zero one six acres. Lot two containing the existing two-story dwelling barn and outbuilding on zero point eight eight three three acres. Lot three containing one point one four one seven acres. And lot four containing zero point eight six two nine acres. All lots are proposed to be served by public water and sewer. The property is zoned R four medium-density residential. Robert H. Rue is the owner and applicant. Previous township consideration. At their July twenty first, two thousand sixteen, November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. February twentieth, two thousand fourteen, and March twenty eighth, two thousand thirteen meetings. The planning commission reviewed minor subdivision two thousand thirteen dash two oh one Rue subdivision and took the plan under advisement. The Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Contended upon the applicant submitting a waiver from the time limitation to review the plan. The planning commission's soft deadline to act is May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. The Board of Commissioners' hard deadline to act on the plan is June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Want to move on to the applicant?
Good evening. This is Alan Formaw from Keystone Consulting Engineers. I have with me in our conference room here, the Rue family. We have Jason Rue, Cindy Smith Rue, and Bob Rue, and also Michael Molf from our office here at Keystone. I'll, I'll keep this brief. Greg Adams kind of said the history here of, of when the township has, has reviewed this. We have recently, you know, taken over this project from a design standpoint with the Rues. Starting back in, I think it was November of last year, two thousand twenty. There are some changes. I, I know a lot of, I heard a lot of the planning commission members are fairly. Are, have been installed more recently than this plan has been around, but. There are some changes and modifications in order to try to simplify this and make it as a little bit more flexible. One was there was previously a waiver requested for the profile slope, I will call it, of the private access driveway. There was some discussion about that. It now meets the, the seven percent maximum profile. And it is located basically where there's an existing driveway today. It's just that it's proposed to be widened. That's, that's an important consideration because that's a waiver that's not needed any longer. Also, in order to kind of simplify the, the property rights. The, as was mentioned, lot two is intended to basically own. What would be the quote right-of-way for this private driveway, private street. And then there's a, an access easement and maintenance easement that's shared with the other ones, the other. Properties that are serviced by that, that cul-de-sac. Also, another change from any plan that you've seen in the past is there was, there was on lot septic. That was previously, previously proposed. That is now proposed to be an extension of public water and sewer. For public utilities. And again, that, that affords, you know, preservation of some of the. Some of the trees that exist on the property so that we don't need space to manage both stormwater and sanitary sewer. Along with some flexibility in property lines that was desired. You know, this, this property could be developed much more densely, but the Rues would like to just keep it with these lots. With the, with the benefit of public water and sewer for those items that I mentioned. As far as the stormwater end, we are going to be doing some, some additional testing. To try to simplify a couple of those designs and take care of the comments that we have received. From the, from the engineers review, from the Big Car Company and also in our engineering. So we thank you for those comments. We will be addressing those. Couple of other items. That I just wanted to go over, basically with the planning commission, would revolve around the frontage of this property. As was mentioned, there are some waivers and referrals that have been requested with this packet. We'd really like to go through with the planning commission and discuss. Kind of where the planning commission is with, with those if at all possible, so that we could address that with our, with our next submission. And also any overall. Concerns or, or whatnot that's, that comes with the, the public, public utility extension. Both the water and the sewer. Along with where the electric and communications would be serviced off of Doll Street. Between two existing dwellings on an unopened alley.
Okay. Any questions from the planning commission?
Yes, it, it was mentioned earlier that the out parcel, I guess the Lutz property that they would need to give approval for that cul-de-sac road because part of it is on their property. Has that been coordinated with them and have they given approval for that?
Yeah, so we understand that there's a request and a review letter to, to, you know, have a, a signature block on the, on the plan set for this to show that they're okay with that. There's an existing, the existing driveway is split between the properties today, so there's already a, a sharing of responsibilities there, but as far as I believe there's, I'm not privy to that, but I believe there's a document already signed.
I don't remember what it was for, but I, I actually wanted me to have John sign something. It might have been the driveway.
Yeah, so there, there has been dialogue over that and, you know, that's, that's fully understood and it's, it's basically, you know, some minor modifications to a shared situation that already exists today for that access to the property.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
What about the widening of Huckleberry Road? We have a land development to the west of this parcel. That's widening of Huckleberry Road and one of your waiver requests is to not do that, so. But what are your thoughts on that?
So, you know, glad you brought that up. That's, that's one of the items we'll call it along what I call the frontage, you know, items that we'd like to discuss. Obviously, the, the neighboring parcel there, the out parcel, the Rue's family does, does not own, obviously. But there, in addition to some existing constraints on that property, lot two with the existing farmhouse, that, the location of that structure, well, let's say before we, we widen, right now that side of the street is about 16 and a half feet. I believe your ordinance for this, this room says it needs to be 20 feet. So we're talking about a three and a half foot widening. If we look at the whole cross-section in your ordinance, which includes, you know, potential widening curb, a 3% maximum slope area that includes a planter strip for street trees and also a sidewalk before it would, it would go up at a four to one slope. If you look at that cross-section, that cross-section just really will not fit. Feasible in front of that, that existing dwelling. So whether, you know, there's some, and, and I also obviously have to state the, the obvious of anyone that's driven by there of, you know, there's an existing severe drop-off there. We'll call it a three to one slope approximately. That's where the waiver came from. And I, I believe there's some openness to, to, to do something there. But we do have some, you know, real constraints with the, the structure and the out parcel. Widening the road is probably going to require some sort of discussions with the township as far as how stormwater would be managed. You know, the sidewalk, would it, would you want that to be a deferral with, you know, a layout design? Until there would be some future tie-in point. Those are, those are all things that we'd like to discuss with you.
Well, when the, the tie-in point is being, you know, is being designed right now, at least to the west.
Does that go directly up to the property line or is there a gap in there?
No, this, it goes to the property line.
Okay, it does go to the property line. So if we were to, you know, show that there, that would take us down to the proposed private driveway. And then we have a, an out parcel there and then a very short frontage below that. So are you talking about you would just like to see it go to the proposed enhanced driveway?
I would be okay with that because at least you have a connection. I understand that, that the difficulties with the, the Lutz property and, you know, the configuration of the, the residents and stuff there. At a minimum, I would like to see the sidewalk go to, or the widening and all the frontage improvements go to the, the cul-de-sac there. Is there sidewalks internal to that cul-de-sac as well or is it just end at the Huckleberry?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part that you said?
Is there sidewalk along the cul-de-sac itself internally?
No, there's, the waiver is for along Huckleberry and the cul-de-sac. There's there's constraints as far as along that, that private driveway from slope and, and the area, parking area that exists today in front of the barn. So there's, there's currently no sidewalk proposed there on that area as well. Is there? I don't have it right in front of me at the, this, this second, but is there any thought that there could be some relief on the overall cross-section of that planter strip at, at least between where a, a widened roadway could be installed and where the sidewalk starts? That, that might be one area where we could, we could at least look at to see whether we could, we could fit it in a little bit better instead of having that eight, eight plus feet in there.
Are, are you saying the, the, the planner with that is going to prohibit the ability to widen the road?
Well, I'm saying something, something would have to give. You know, whether or not a roadway is widened today, whether or not this concrete sidewalk is installed today, curbing and trees. I'm looking at it from a, you know, let's, let's lay it out. If that's the desire there, then we could talk about whether things would actually get constructed now or deferred or waived. But because of the, the existing structure there and not running a oh, a four to one slope, you know, right up to the, the doorstep. We need some flexibility at least on the, on that cross-section. In other words, does the planter strip have to be as wide as the ordinance says, or can we take that down to four feet?
I think we've done that for other locations, including sidewalk being installed right by my house currently by the railroad tracks, but that's a whole nother story. I mean, we're we'd rather see it built with a little modification than not built at all.
And, and certainly I would say that if, if the two design, if Keystone and Pigcock worked together and at least presented something to us in the next go-round, we could review it and have a better idea of what we're looking at.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I think that's, that's fair. So, so look at the scope of what we're looking at here. We're looking at trying to figure out what we could fit you know, in the, in the real estate that's available there. I guess this is northwest of, of the private drive and then have waivers for everything to the right. Was that what we're looking at?
Deferrals. What, what?
Carol.
Deferrals.
Yeah, that, that Lutz property, I don't know how you would widen that. Then the road's going to be right on the house, so yeah.
Yeah, there's really no way to get around the, the Lutz property and then you're going to start in the middle of nowhere. And I'm not familiar with if there's any plans for any sidewalk or anything to the east there, but. Okay, so that, that's, that's some, some good feedback. You know, whether it would actually be constructed now or not is, is kind of a secondary question. The primary question is, you know, how would we lay it out and how would we fit it in? So that's, that's valuable feedback. I, I can, you know, review that with Anthony offline from this meeting and we can try to see what we can, what we can lay out here.
I think I'd like to see it proposed, you know, what, what you can do the whole, for the whole distance for the whole property, including what's to the right. And we will decide deferrals. I think after, but I think even when we do deferrals, we, we do want to see that, what the design would look like.
Yeah, we would want to see it shown on the plan, even as it defer.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I can, you know, I'll certainly reach out to Anthony then after we have a couple of sketches together.
Okay, thank you. Just email me. We can work it out. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Appreciate that feedback.
Do we, do we need to go through? Should we go through the waivers and, and deferrals that you're requesting? One by one?
I mean, if you, if you, if you don't mind going over, you know, yeah, if you don't mind.
I don't think we should vote to approve anything, you know?
No, I don't. I'm not saying you have to vote to approve anything, but you know, the preliminary final is that something that you, I don't need to hear any vote, but is, is that something that we should, we should continue in the direction we're going?
Right.
Yeah, preliminary final is pretty standard, in my opinion.
Okay, the second one is the, the cul-de-sac with the, the quote right-of-way or, you know, in this case easement and whatnot. We have, we have some restrictions of structures and whatnot out there and other properties. I, I really don't have much of a I don't have too much of a leeway on that. I'll, I'll work on, I'll put together the, the separate blown-up plan for the emergency turnaround, you know, demonstrating the emergency vehicles can turn around as requested. That's not a problem.
Is, is, it was, it was mentioned that public safety reviewed and approved it. Is there documentation of that that has been?
Emergency.
Yeah. I provided, I provided the
Oh, it's in here. Okay.
The documentation for the most recent meeting. If you want to see the prior ones, I can provide those as well.
In, in either case, you know, we can, we can show the, the, the turnaround there on the paper with, you know, the emergency vehicle, garbage truck. That's
Well, I don't prefer to have garbage trucks up there. Okay, that's basically designed for the fire emergency. That's it.
Okay, well, garbage trucks actually smaller.
Well, I prefer them to pick up out front.
Yeah.
Where they, where they currently are.
Okay, so the, the, you know, what they want to work out is pick up the garbage the way they do now, but the fire truck, the fire truck is more restrictive anyway, so we can, we can show that on there.
I doubt the garbage truck would want to come on a private, anyway.
Right, they didn't. Yeah. Okay, the third one, I, I, I've heard you guys discussing that before. The, the driveway, it's the same place as where it is today. We'd love to be able to meet the ordinance on that, but we just, it's, the location is sandwiched between existing structures here and I, I, I can't. It's, it's kind of closed, but I, I just can't meet it. I don't think there's any detriment from a traffic standpoint, given the use.
Okay.
Yeah, existing to me, yeah.
Mr. Formaw.
Yes.
This, this question came up. Is, is that still shown to be a right-in, right-out driveway?
It's shown to be a right-out driveway.
Right out.
Yes, so it'd be, it'd be full service coming in and restricted with right only, right out only. Uh, let's see. So then, you know, we, we talked about, you know, we, we talked about these other ones. We're gonna, we're gonna work through this. I don't think we need to do this one by one.
Okay. And, and basically we want to see the, the full design. You know, as, as, as a, you know, see what you can do and then we can talk about it.
Yeah, that, that sounds good. We'll, we'll design it as if it was going to be constructed today and, you know, and then we can talk about it from there sequence.
I would like, I would like to talk about the the second to last one about the easement at the edge of the proposed cul-de-sac. Mainly my concern is, is this going to be memorialized? Who takes care of what as far as snow? I, I know this is all a family endeavor, but eventually parcels get sold. People move on, people pass away. And how, how is this going to be memorialized? Who's responsible for what going forward?
Yes, yeah, it would be, the, the Rue family has, has an attorney and that, that attorney would in conjunction with the, you know, review by the township solicitor would, would bind all these properties together for working out those issues of, of maintenance and repair and access, all, all those, all those necessary items because I, I totally recognize and agree that, you know, the way something is today is not necessarily the way it'll be forever.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions on the on the deferrals and waivers? Okay, we'll, we'll go to courtesy of the floor. When to turn on the the chat just turned on.
Chat is open. So if anybody would like to comment, please put your name and your address in the chat. We have Lee Salt, 3731 Manchester Road.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick question really for the planning commission. I know you're talking about roadway widening here for this property, but is it the plan to have Huckleberry the same width all the way from Cedar Crest down to the school? It is comparing, I know it's widened out the school and it gets narrower. Is it, is it the plan to have that the whole width all the way through? Instead of widening, narrowing, widening, widening again?
Well, for, for this project, we can only require them to, to widen what fronts on their property. We can't require them to do anything beyond their property line. So that's why we're just discussing the portion of road right in front of the property.
I understand. And, and Ridge Farms is the same way. You can only, they can only widen what's on their side of the property, but if they're going to do that, you're going to widen, ask people on their property to widen it so it's the same width throughout the whole street.
Not unless they try some sort of land development on their property.
I don't think there's any plans.
Okay.
Yeah. At this point, the other way to do it is if the township decides to actually purchase the land. You know, because if, if, from here down, it's, it's pretty much established neighborhoods with a, a really small degree of likelihood that any of those properties would then be subdivided. So for something like that, that would require a township project to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we have John Lutz, 2436 Huckleberry Road.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm the John Lutz. That's the other property. I have a question. Since it's going to be a right exit only, is there any intention of taking the, I want to say the hump out of the Huckleberry? So there's, it's better view to go out?
So, so I'll, I'll respond to that in that, you know, one of the constraints is the, the hillside there, we'll call it, right along the road and that, that is being discussed of, of being taken back along with these improvements, but not re-profiling Huckleberry Road.
Even though you're going to walk.
You cut out.
I'm talking the hump. What is after? I'm talking the hump, what is after um, the driveway? And it's in the part that you're widening the road. I'm just asking for consideration, that's all. I've lived here my whole life and it's always been a difficult thing, uh, turning left or right, but, um, it's just, I'm asking for consideration, because it, it would make it safer leaving, especially since there's going to be more people leaving, and it's,
Driveway.
What's that?
Need the driveway worse.
It would make the driveway worse?
Yes.
Why would that be?
Well, if you lower the street, it's going to make the driveway more of a pitch.
No, because the hump I'm talking about is, is after the driveway. I think if you get a chance sometime, just park on my driveway and, or the driveway and, and look to your left and look to your right. Very easy to look at.
We can, so we can look at it and talk to the, talk to the township, um, you know, see whether the, the township would have any uh, circle, you know, have, have any interest in doing that as a township project, right?
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Tony, uh, when you, I don't want to tell you what to do, uh, but when you look at the widening in the sidewalk, that's probably a good portion to look at as well, because if we're widening the road there to put in curb and sidewalk, that's going to impact that hump as well.
We'll do, we'll definitely keep that, we'll, we'll put that in consideration, Brian. I appreciate it. It's a good call.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. The next is Scott Alden.
I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
There's a lot of background noise, Scott.
All right, let me try to get to a quieter area. Hold on one second. Hello, sorry about that. Um, so I live at twenty-four twenty-five Doll Street, which is where the easement for water and sewers proposed. And the question I have is, if this goes in, and supposedly this is a paper road, so nobody owns the property technically, if there is a water main break, um, that's, you know, right above my house and it floods my house, who pays for that?
Is that a question for the solicitor, right?
Uh, well, whoever is going to approve this, we need to work that out before I would sign something saying, yeah, I'm okay with that going in. Or if somebody gets hurt, you know, there's supposedly a manhole that's supposed to go in between my house and my neighbors. Kid falls down a manhole. Who's responsible for that?
Mr. Foral, can you address the location of this and um, the, the lines and, and I guess the um, situation with respect to utility maintenance that's been considered for the project?
Okay, um, yeah, so what, uh, what Mr. Alden is saying here is, uh, it is shown on the, the plans, um, and it is on the screen. So basically, what is proposed here is, uh, there's public sanitary sewer down on Doll Street. And Doll Street is, is down towards the bottom of your screen there. You see some bolder text uh, that points to, um, that points to a, a manhole there. Uh, so what's proposed is to relocate the existing manhole over about four, about four, probably about four feet. And um, and then go straight up, um, and then until I guess to a point of, it, it's, it's probably up in the air whether it's, whether it's going to make a bend here or ultimately go straight, but um, we recognize that this is going to be a public line. Um, and, and this, this applies to whether this is the water line uh, next to it or the, the uh, the sanitary sewer line. It would be, it would be publicly, publicly owned and maintained by, uh, by the, by the township. Um, because they, you know, it'd be my understanding, I'm not an attorney, but, but it's going to serve more than one, more than one residence. Uh, so that's the way it would be set up. Um, the only reason why the manhole is proposed is because it would change direction there and, and the pipe would change direction. So in order to do that, um, sanitary sewer design typically does not like, um, the standard is not to put a forty-five degree bend in or something like you would have in a water line system, but rather have a structure um, that you could enter and go down and, and fix any sort of blockage, uh, because a sanitary sewer by nature um, has solids on it. Uh, so that's, that's really, um, you know, there, there might be a, a way that we could try to avoid the manhole, but I can't guarantee that right at the second. Um, but that would, that would serve uh, more than one lot. It would be publicly owned until it gets to a point where um, it would go down to just, you know, one, one lot of service. And there's an easement proposed around that that would, uh, you know, provide for that, for that maintenance of, of those facilities. Um, it is in, you know, what was intended to be a street, um, but was never claimed uh, or opened by the, by the township. Uh, the water line does go up slightly there uh, to tee off into a fire hydrant that's on the other side of the unopened street. Uh, now then, again, that would just, uh, the proposal is just to extend that up. Uh, and then there's an existing electric and communication lines that are on the opposite side of the street as well, so, um, it would all, this, this water and sewer would be beneath the grade. The only thing that is currently proposed to be seen and visible on the few, on the surface is that, is that one manhole. Um, as far as liability concerns and things like that, I, I don't think, uh, you know, as an engineer, I'm, you know, able to address. Uh, but that's, that's the design of it, as was asked, John.
Thanks, Alan, for that. Um, my question, though, based on what you've just said, is um, that since we're dealing with an unopened street, I think that you're going to need the authority from the private property owners on each side of those lines and um, from what I'm hearing, I'm not sure that you have that authority at this point. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I'm trying to assess um, whether I would sign it or not, uh, at this point, um, after talking with my lawyer and talking about, well, it also devalues your property, because right now I don't have, you know, water and sewer going through. Um, so just things I need to evaluate, so I can't really sign anything at this point. So that's kind of where I'm at, and I need to evaluate these things like who's responsible, you know, if water main break happens and it floods my basement, which is right below where this water line and sewer line is running, I want to know who to call.
So, um, so I guess my response to, to that would be, um, you know, we can look uh, further at try, attempting to eliminate uh, the manhole. I, I don't, I, I don't really want to put it there, so maybe there's, maybe there's a way uh, that we can look at eliminating the manhole. That, that eliminates any surface improvement. Um, as far as who you would call, um, the intent is that this, again, was, is a public line um, that serves multiple residences, so if there was an issue with the line, the intent would be to call the uh, um, authority or the, you know, the, the organization within the township uh, that's responsible for that water line as, would be any other water line, um, you know, down on Doll Street or anywhere else in the neighborhood.
Right. I, I currently have zero chance of getting flooded, where now I will have a chance of getting flooded. And don't say it doesn't happen, because it just happened to my brother in South Whitehall, so it does happen. I'm going to call.
So, uh, yeah, so I, I, it sounds like, you know, we'll have to have some additional uh, conversations, maybe offline on that. Um, but we, we can look further at trying to address your concern about the, uh, the manhole. Um, as far as liability, I'm sure, uh, maybe the attorney can, uh, um, the, the Rue's attorney can respond to that in some respect in conjunction with Jennifer.
Is, is Lehigh County Authority the water authority for South Whitehall? No?
No.
Who is?
South Whitehall.
South Whitehall.
Okay.
Now, there's a reservoir there that's not controlled by South Whitehall, but, but the water in South Whitehall is primarily South Whitehall. There are small little slivers here or there that are LCA.
And at that point, there's actually two water lines on Doll Street. One of them, I believe, is, uh, comes out of that reservoir, which is at least, or called correctly, two feet in diameter.
And that reservoir is the city.
Well, anyway, uh, Scott, I do have to uh, sign off, so anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I am not seeing any, and it doesn't look like we have any callers either.
Okay. If there are no more questions on this, uh, we, we would take this under advisement. And any, anything else from the applicant?
No, we're, I think we're good. Thank you guys for the time, uh, and ladies for the time, and uh, we'll take that under advisement, and our plan is to be back for the June planning commission meeting.
Okay, um, somebody want to make a motion to take this under advisement?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh.
Can I get, can I get a verbal assurance that you will grant us a waiver from the time limitation?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to table.
Motion by Diane. You're a second. I didn't, I didn't see that. Second. A roll call.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Matt Mallqueen.
Hi.
Dave, um, did I miss somebody? Phil McNair.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, um, that takes care of the subdivision review. Uh, we'll move on to item five, transportation infrastructure update. This is Tony.
It is, I'm sorry, I'm just switching screens here.
That's all right.
What we do have is, uh, last month, end of March, a few of us from the township met with um, RK and K and Penn Dot, who are designing the uh, three oh nine Tillman Street interchange. Um, good meeting, they're moving, moving ahead with it, but uh, it currently, it was specific to um, uh, water. It was actually the little Cedar Creek that crossed underneath Route three oh nine. They're doing some work in there. They have to get the permit in. But specific to that, um, they, they wanted to meet with the township, talk about floodplain ordinance, things like that, but all that being said, it looks like that project is moving forward. They're getting into the design phase. They're looking to submit to the conservation district, so um, it should be a big benefit to the township.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Good, thanks.
Okay. Um, item number six is the comprehensive plan update.
Yes, so just to um, kind of follow up, you know, give a little more detail, I wanted to kind of review where we are in the process and then, you know, what we're expecting to get out of the working groups and um, kind of where we go after the working groups. I kind of briefly mentioned it at the March thirty-first meeting, um, looking at this phase five. Um, and, you know, it, I'll kind of go through the process and then we can kind of discuss that phase five. Um, so just as an update as to where we are with everything, we had the kickoff meeting. Um, we're working on getting everything up on the web and then blasting that out to try and get, you know, people that couldn't make the meeting have the opportunity to watch the videos and learn, learn more about the specific topic areas, and then hopefully volunteer for, for the working group. And then what we are working on internally as staff is kind of developing that scenario um, of the where should we grow and how should we grow? Um, so we're kind of putting that together and matching it to the typologies that are required for the model inputs. So the inputs for the fiscal model and the traffic model require certain typologies, and we have to match the how should we grows and where should we grows to those typologies, so that they can get plugged into the model. Um, so Greg and I will be working on that. Once that gets over to the modelers, um, they can plug it in. Most of their base stuff is, is completed, so I, you know, that's the hard part typically with models. Um, so now they just kind of have to plug in this new information. Um, and then once that new information is prepared, that's when we can have the the working group. I, I hate, I call, I call it a kickoff meeting, but we just had a kickoff meeting, so I don't, I don't know what to call it, but um, I guess the second half, maybe. So, once all that information is packaged, we look at the scenario that came out of those two exercises, look at those impacts, discuss those impacts. That gets packaged for the individual working group meetings. So the individual working group meetings, they look at the existing, well, that package, um, what that means to the specific topic area. Um, evaluate the two thousand nine comp plan. Um, what's in it, what's good, what's not good, things that carry over. Um, and that would be the first individual working group meeting. The second working group meeting, we bring in LVPC to kind of talk about regional concerns, um, best practices for including into, into comprehensive plans. Um, and then the third meeting of the working groups is intended to kind of put everything together and make recommendations. So that working group meeting, after that's completed, they'll have a direction and an understanding of what kind of comes out of that. The next piece of it is to bring everybody back together. Um, so we bring the working groups back together, and we've discussed having a representative from the working group, whether it's a chairperson or, you know, we're kind of trying to keep it pretty informal. Um, but we have a representative from that working group present those recommendations um, to the whole group. And then those recommendations, and this is kind of where we get to phase five that we, I briefly talked about. Those recommendations really need to be compiled and reconciled. There may be some conflicting recommendations. And then also from that, one of the pieces that's not designated as a working group is the land use component. And that land use component, we left for the end, because there'll, there'll be recommendations that come out of the working groups that would impact land use. Um, so this phase five is really where So this phase five is really where. We take those recommendations. And the kind of put them together into the future land use plan. And. At a few me, well, I think it was a few meetings ago, the concern of the planning commission's role in getting involved in the plan. Greg and I kind of discussed that this is probably the best point for the planning commission to get involved. Because ultimately, that's when you put together the plan. And then, you know, we could schedule workshops, planning commission workshops for these. Getting the plan together and then that would get recommended to. Eventually to the BOC. So I think what I was kind of looking for. Tonight is a little bit of discussion on, you know, planning commission. Roles in the in that phase five. Whether we should. Form a subcommittee similar to how the two thousand nine plan was rolled out. You know, and gets gets some feelings on that with regards to the two thousand nine plan compared to this plan. We really, you know, George used to say that we flipped it on its head. And we were very conscious of taking a lot of public input upfront. To shape those recommendations and ultimately that plan. So that's kind of why there hasn't been that planning commission or that subcommittee involvement at the up to this point. But, you know, when we get to this phase five, we put it all together and then move it forward from there. So. Again, any discussions on thoughts on whether it, you know, the plan commission. Is adequate. Should we form us make a formal subcommittee? Keep it as workshops at the planning commission level, which would be open to the public, of course. So any thoughts on that or discussion would be appreciated.
Okay, before you get, could you just give a little bit of more of what is typology? I don't really. Explain what that is.
So it. So it's mainly generated from the fiscal impact model. So he has development typologies. So for example. Apartment dwelling over. You know, I forget the number, but like twenty family. Apartment building is one of the typologies. And in some of the how should we grow images, there may be one or two of those that got picked. It's just as an example. So Greg and I have to look and see what hex. That typology or that picture which corresponds to a typology. What hex that. Fits in and was pick chosen. And kind of come up with a. Square footage or square footage in the case of commercial or dwelling units in the case of residential.
So it's a type of development.
I guess. So it's a type of development. Yes. Thank you, David. Yeah, so it just it reflects different types of development that could get plugged into the economic model. Because each of those types of development have certain fiscal impacts. So that's how that gets kind of rolled into the model. And then. Conveniently enough, the type same typologies can be used for the traffic model as well. So, you know, we basically, Greg and I only have to sit down and hammer through this once, hopefully. And then we'll be able to get it both into the traffic and the economic model.
Okay, and you're asking, do we want to split that up or have everybody work on everything? Is that what you're?
So what we're. Once it kind of comes, it funnels through all the working groups, we'll have this package of recommendations. And. That package of recommendations needs to be. Put into a comprehensive plan and a future land use plan. And that's where we're thinking that it would be a good opportunity. An appropriate opportunity for the planning commission to really take that and run with it as a board. Because ultimately, it is the planning commission's comp plan to be recommended to the BOC. So that's where we're talking about having. The planning commission kind of steer that part of the ship. So again, after it goes through the fiscal impact models, one thing I did want to mention about the models. Is right now we have it set up. To evaluate the scenarios and there'll be some. We have, we kind of have to wait and see how it comes out, but there may be some. Opportunity for tweaking the model as we have that meeting. But we haven't, we've kind of. Briefly talked about it internally. But it would probably be a good idea to have those models run again at the end. So we have the comprehensive plan, you know, here's the planning commission's. Comprehensive plan. What are those fiscal impacts and what are those traffic impacts from that plan? So we could. Certainly run that again. And, you know, once the models are set up, my understanding is pretty easy to kind of tweak some things here and there.
I have a question. I guess last February or March, right before the COVID shutdown, Todd Poole had done. The presentation for us on some economic. Considerations is is he or is the township planning to bring him back around at this point to provide guidance?
Yes, so he he's the economic modeler. So he's the one that's that's going to plug in those typologies into his model. He has a base model and a. I forget. I forget what he called it, Greg. Do you call it like recent build or new build? Like things that have been approved but aren't built.
Right.
Plugged into his model. So the next layer is, you know, the scenario of where and how. So that's Todd's Todd's model. And he'll be back to present that at that. Second half kickoff. And then Scott Pastursky with Keystone Consulting Engineers is working on the traffic model. He has the same. Setup where he's got the current build. A new build, approved build, and then we'll have that future build. So it'll, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is what you're looking at then? We would be actually, I guess, in the next phase, this phase four, we would be, and we talked about it earlier a little bit, just. We'll be splitting, you know, making sure we have all the the five. Groups covered by. At least hopefully at least two planning commission members. And then we'll, once that's done, gets put together, run through the models and everything, and then then we're writing the. Plan and we'll either write that all together or split that up too. Is that is that what you're looking?
Yeah, I I'm kind of envisioning it. It would be done. We would. Make recommendations or drafts and present those drafts and get comments on that.
Okay.
It's kind of how we envisioned rolling that out. And the idea of the working groups is that we have. A lot of those recommendations already structured and written. So that we basically just have to build around those. The other piece of it is we kind of approached this from the very beginning. And George was a big driver of this. Is to make it a very visual plan. Not very text heavy. So a lot of graphics and a lot of, you know, charts and graphs and. You know, frankly, taking the cue from the LVPC on, you know, how they're the look and feel of some of their plans. Which are more graphical and less text. So we're hoping to, if we can, keep the text to a minimum, but. You know, there's there's some stuff that has to be in there.
Okay.
We also. We also used the at the LVPC. Wasn't it the Brisbane Comp Plan from Australia? That was the foundation.
That that's the one George always talked about. Yeah.
Yeah.
So there there's a plan from Brisbane, Australia. That really has. Has a pretty, has they nailed it as far as a good combination between graphics and text. So we kind of always use that one as as how we want to roll this out. And I don't know. I don't know if he took that. He had a copy of it, and I don't know if he took it or he left it.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you want.
All right. Sounds good.
So I guess one of the things to think about is if. You know, and some of this might come out. During the working groups, but whether a subcommittee or, you know, planning commission steers that phase five. And, you know, I we certainly don't need an answer tonight, but something to think about. You know, best ways to kind of manage that piece of the, frankly, the most important piece of the the process.
Now, when you say subcommittee, are you saying a subcommittee of the planning commission, like a subgroup?
Like the the way the. And Greg, you could probably chime in here. The way the two thousand nine plan was was managed was by a subcommittee.
Bill, maybe you remember, we built a subcommittee out of, I believe it was two board of commissioner members, two to three planning commission. Representatives from Park and Rec, Landscape and Shade Tree, I think maybe Public Safety was on there. Plus a hand a few handpicked. Residents. And that formed the steering committee. So, yeah, that that's what we called it back in the day. It was a steering committee made of ostensibly experts. To guide the process. So that was one of the discussions we talked about. As as a potential. You know. The group that handles the writing of the plan of the comp plan. Of course, the other one is. Just let the planning commission take it and do with it as they please. So. Those are kind of the two options we saw for. The group of people who would take over phase five and actually draft the the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
My initial thoughts is for this this board right here to do it. That was just my gut feeling.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the one thing.
To be commissioners of planning. So it's like. Yeah, the board of commissioners through all the last, however many years that we've all been appointed, have been trusted to. Do good planning. Plus, it gives us a good solid foundation going forward. To implement the plan. To criticize the plan or our own work. So I I think that's. How I'm feeling that it should be this board that does that phase five.
And and I think it, you know, it would be workshops, planning commission workshops and, you know, open to the public. So it's not like it's. Done in a silo for by any means. Which is some of the feedback we got way back in the beginning of this process. So that's one of the concerns. One of the things I'm kind of hoping comes out of the working groups is. You know, a advocate for each of those topic areas. You know, a person that feels strongly about it and really wants to get involved. Moving forward in into that next phase. So. Again, we'll we'll kind of see what happens with with that piece of it.
Okay.
Do you want? Would you envision like? A various planning commissioner being on two subcommittees. At the same time or?
You know, and I think.
At the same time, basically, is what I'm getting at. It's like, yeah.
So we're going to, the idea is to pack them in. So, you know, we're. We're having them almost, I don't know if it's going to be weekly or we'll have to figure out the schedule, but they're going to be stacked on top of each other. And we may run. Some. Subject areas concurrently. With different staff. So. You know, that's one piece of having multiple planning commission members or people signing up for multiple. Meetings. But again, the intention is to post all the videos. We're intending to have a workbook for each of the. Working groups so that everybody. Is kind of on the same page as to what those expectations are. So basically, we we. As we're having these meetings, we have, you know. Deliverables with each meeting assigned in that work group. Which means that people can watch the video and fill out their own work group and kind of submit that for consideration.
Very good. Sounds like a good plan. We got to work out that I think the details will start to come to light as we, you know, go through the. The next phase with, you know, working on the subgroups and stuff. And maybe we want to keep that or maybe we want to change things around, you know. Let's see how it looks.
Yep.
And then we question, you know, you know, how much of it does do you write? How much do we write? And those kind of questions, you know, or?
Yeah, and I.
Writing versus.
Picturing it is. Again, keeping it very graphical. And maybe that's, you know, we work on a one pager for each. I don't know if we'll be able to get to one page, but. Ideally, it'd be like one. Slide. To discuss and we can take notes and put those notes together. And then we would go back and kind of compile it and draft it and then come back with that draft is kind of how I pictured running with it.
Okay.
Do you envision the being in person or virtually? Or the world has yet to decide.
I don't think the world has decided yet.
Or a hybrid.
Yeah. Well, faith, obviously, phase four, we're planning for virtual.
Okay.
And that should take us through June, I believe.
Hopefully, early.
Yeah. Yeah.
How quick Greg and I can get the scenarios. And typologies over to the modelers and then how long they're going to take. Is kind of where we are.
Yeah.
Will that be a Michael Baker platform again or?
Probably, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, David. We'll move on to courtesy of the floor. Well, see, I do want to talk with two subjects there. One is the annual report sent it out and. The best, I I think that's on the. BOC agenda next meeting, and I was going to present that then. Are there any questions or comments on that? We we discussed that at the last meeting. I think the only thing we really added at that meeting was the plans for. This year. Does that sound, is that okay with everybody as it was published? Okay, we'll we'll go with that then, hearing no. No comments and. Then Greg, you said that the the. And Jennifer, I think it's some comments on the home based businesses that you still need to do some work on. On that and we'll, I guess you have the drafts for the next time or so is that what the plan?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. We'll do that and and, okay, is there any any? We'll do that and, and, okay, is there any, any comments from the floor? Any, any questions, comments from anybody left here at the meeting? Great.
Next, next month, so far, as far as I can tell, we have one application in. We will be seeing 1215 Hausman Road Flex Warehouse or Flex Building again. So we'll see how much more progress they made toward getting a, an approval. So that hopefully leaves us with a bit of time to do other work.
Okay, so maybe we can do stuff on the comp plan or things like that.
We will certainly make sure we have plenty of stuff to work on at that meeting.
Yep.
Wonderful, okay. Wouldn't want it any other way. Okay, are there any comments from anyone else? Anybody from the community? Comments, questions? Hearing none. A motion to, here, the motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anybody opposed? We're done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.